Who's rush? Cindy, do we have people that have dialed in? What's that?
Those names mean anything to you?
I can't see them.
Yes, India says yes.
We know her. We should have, we should have some others too, but they may be a little late. Okay, let's go ahead and call the Johnson City Council meeting number 22-02 to order. Cindy, roll call please.
Councilmember Coke? Here. Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Burkhardt?
Here.
The first item on the agenda is not actually listed on the agenda this evening, but it's going to be the swearing in of the mayor to her eighth term as mayor of Johnston. And we have a special guest with us here this evening, Judge David Porter, who will be doing the swearing in. So why don't I come down to the center here and...
I'm Paula Gernfeld.
I'm Paula Gernfeld.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Invest in my ability.
Invest in my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of mayor in Johnston, Iowa.
Discharge all the duties of the office of mayor in Johnston, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
First of all, we need to sign the papers, but I also just want to share a little information about Judge Porter. For those of you that don't know, Judge Porter was appointed to the district court bench in 2013. He graduated from great law school in 2004 with several awards and distinctions. He left the state for a while, but he returned and served as a violent prosecutor in Wapo County, and then in the whole county attorney's office prosecuting W.I. and vehicular homicides, as well as sexually based offenses and crimes against children. He was a resident of Johnson for a while. Oh, you still are. I thought you moved. Oh, well, he was a resident of Johnson. And that's one reason it's so special for me to have him here this evening. You know, when I told the Chief Justice that I had asked you to do this, you know, she couldn't have been more pleased. She just thinks so highly of you. And she has just a lot of admiration. So anyway, thank you so much. God, I almost had it memorized. How many times have I done this? Thanks, Kim. And we have another item on the, that's not listed on the agenda, but that I'm adding to the agenda this evening, and it's in recognition of Martin Luther King Jr.'s holiday yesterday. As you all know, that day yesterday was set aside, has been set aside each year to celebrate the birthday and the life of Martin Luther King Jr. And as you also know, Dr. King was an American Baptist minister and a leader in the American civil rights movement until his assassination in 1968. One commentator, whose article I read yesterday suggested that Martin Luther King Jr.'s holiday serves several purposes. One, of course, to honor the legacy of Dr. King. Also to focus on issues of civil rights, to highlight the use of nonviolence to promote change, and to call people into public service. All purposes worthy of a special day to celebrate Dr. King's life's achievements. In 1963, Dr. King organized the March on Washington, where he delivered his "I Have a Dream" speech. I've asked my granddaughter to join us this evening, India Williams, to share with us the closing paragraphs of that historic and powerful speech. India, please come forward. Want to stand there? Actually, why don't you come up here?
I will definitely stand. Good evening, everyone.
Can you hear you?
Can you hear me? Okay, again, this is from Mr. King. "I have a dream that one day every valley shall be exalted, every hill and mountain shall be made low. The rough places will be made plain, and the crooked places will be made straight. And the glory of the Lord shall be revealed, and all flesh shall see it together. This is our hope. This is the faith that I go back to the South with. With this faith, we will be able to hew out the mountain of despair, a stone of hope. With this faith, we will be able to transform the jangling discords of our nation into a beautiful sympathy of brotherhood. With this faith, we will be able to work together, to pray together, to struggle together, to go to jail together, to stand up for freedom together, knowing we will be free one day. This will be the day that all God's children will be able to sing a new meaning. My country, 'Tis of thee, sweet land of liberty, of the I sing. Land where my fathers died, land of the pilgrims' pride. From every mountainside, let freedom ring. And if America is to be a great nation, this must become true. And so let freedom ring from the prodigious hilltops of New Hampshire. Let freedom ring from the mighty mountains of New York. Let freedom ring from the heightening Allejines of Pennsylvania. Let freedom ring from the snow-capped Rockies of Colorado. Let freedom ring from the curvaceous slopes of California. But not only that, let freedom ring from the Stone Mountain of Georgia. Let freedom ring from the Lookout Mountain of Tennessee. Let freedom ring from every hill and mole hill of Mississippi. Every mountainside, let freedom ring. And when this happens, and we allow freedom ring, when we let it ring from every village, every hamlet, every state, every city, we will be able to speed up the day when all God's children, black men, white men, Jews, Gentiles, Protestants, and Catholics, will be able to join in hands to sing the words of an old Negro spiritual, "Free at last, free at last. Thank God Almighty, we are free at last."
And India, I was afraid they weren't going to be able to hear you. Super job. Thank you so much for sharing that with us. I'm going to welcome next everyone that is in the audience with us this evening. We have a few other guests. If you're here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask for you to wait for that item to come up and address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, we would ask for you to address the council under public communications. I was also going to mention, I do have some family members that are on the line with us. I know that Mariah Mens, my granddaughter in South Carolina, is with us this evening. I can't see if there's anyone else. Okay, the others obviously haven't figured out how to dial in yet. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that Mariah is on, and thanks, Mariah, for joining us this evening. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And so I'm going to ask my greatest grandchildren to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And Judge, do you want to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance as well? Get us started.
Wait, I forget. Friends, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of sin and justice.
Do you want to introduce yourselves?
I'm coming on.
Here, let's get on. The next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Jim, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda this evening.
Counsel, any changes to the agenda? If not, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
We need to have a picture. Did we get pictures? Wait, I'm sorry. Before the judge slips away. Cindy, did you finish the vote?
I did.
Usually I do the coaching on these.
Don't take them, guys. Easy, easy. All right, go ahead. That was a good steal, Jason. Yeah, I do.
We're getting it. All right. Okay. One, two, three. Okay, I'm going to get a good one. All right, one, two, three.
Those franchise bases.
Okay. I was going to say, we're close. We're close, everybody. Okay. One, two, three. One, two, three. Awesome. Thank you.
Because of all the greenhouses?
Right.
And did you see all the generators they go by their building?
Oh, yeah. Oh, my God. Okay, we are, the next item on the agenda is public communications. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not otherwise on the agenda? Cindy, is there anyone online?
No.
We'll move on then to public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening, and that is to conduct a public hearing and consider resolution number 22-30 approving and authorizing execution of a development agreement by and between the city of Johnston and Ignite Johnston LLC. We'll open this public hearing at 7:16.
Evening, counsel. This is a public hearing regarding the proposed purchase of 5360 Merle Hay Road by Ignite. Ignite submitted their site plan to city staff last Friday for their project immediately to the west of this property. It also does include all the project rally components, so includes this property in addition to that. So you'll be seeing that site plan coming forward, as well as three different development agreements for Ignite Project Rally.
Not as part of this?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the first of those three.
Okay.
It addresses only 52, or excuse me, 5360. You'll see a second one that's an amendment to the existing development agreement for the original proposed project, and then a separate one for the additional commercial buildings proposed as part of Project Rally as well. This one's being presented separately because it's time-sensitive related to the closing on this property, which is anticipated to occur next week or this week. A little background on this was Ignite was asked to consider acquisition of this property about seven, eight months ago, when it came onto the market. The desire was to get it demoed. It's currently the site of a quick oil change, a former site of the Dragon Car Wash, and to incorporate it into their site plan for redevelopment for gateway-aligned uses. That is what's being proposed by Ignite for the project site. As part of the development agreement, they are committing towards development of either a full-service restaurant, brewery, brew pub, or a high-quality retail establishment within 48 months of the property acquisition. Those minimum improvements would be 6,000 square feet at a minimum, and increase the assessed value of the property by a minimum of $600,000. Development agreement grants them a up to $50,000 demolition grant for documented demolition costs on the property. $169,381 to reflect the difference in the purchase price of this property and the believed appraised value of the property. That is guaranteed through a promissory note, as well as a discounted option for the city to purchase the property if not constructed within four years. This payment's a slight modification to the committee proposed draft. This is being made at the time of closing. That was a request from the bank for part of the financing package on the property. Third component to the development grant then is a 10-year 75% TIF rebate on the property for assessed value in excess of $499,000, which is the current assessed value. That rebate shall not exceed $600,000 and is subject to annual appropriation. Any questions?
Counsel, do we have any questions for Adam? Saying none, this is a public hearing on this item. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? If not, we will close this public hearing at 7:19. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 22-30?
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please. Or discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda, item 7A. Consider the following actions related to re-presincting. Consider resolution number 22-29, correcting a Scrivener's error in ordinance number 1074 and accompanying map, and consider resolution number 22-23, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement with Polk County regarding combined election precincts.
Good evening. We actually had this item on the consent agenda, but I wanted to kind of touch base with you since we'd spent so much time on these maps. There is, as we were working on the agreement that you're approving through resolution 22, whichever the first one is, we noticed in the description that we had missed this little sliver of the county. Our boundary went too far west. We needed to move it so that would fall back in the county. There's no... There are nine people, sorry. There are nine people in that little sliver, again, in that county piece. And as you may have seen in my staff report, I did reach out to the election office. Those people that are in those unincorporated Polk County areas that we absorb into our precincts are only voting on things not city-related. So for everyone who was concerned that they missed people, we did not. So they get separate ballots. The other action on, as part of this item, is the resolution approving the agreements for those unincorporated areas, similar to what we did at the last meeting for the county. These are for us to absorb those areas. So I just wanted to touch base so you understood what that change in this one little area meant. So we've corrected the ordinance and the map. Following tonight's action, we'll submit all of this to the Secretary of State's office, and hopefully we don't have to discuss this for another 10 years.
Questions?
Counsel, any questions for Cindy?
Sorry. Quickly, that last, the new part that you added. How many, how many people are in that?
Nine.
All right. Okay.
Any other questions for Cindy? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 22-29?
I will.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. And do we have a motion to approve resolution number 22-23?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B. Consider removing from the table and consideration of the third and final reading and adopting and publishing ordinance number 1073. An ordinance amending section 168.05.2 of the Johnston zoning ordinance, C2 zoning district principal permitted land uses to allow for one automated tunnel car wash or one in-bay car wash. The first item is to remove it from the table. Do we have a motion to remove this? Do we have a motion to remove from the table? Third consideration of ordinance number 1073.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Motion passed. The item is now before us again.
Clayton, I'm going to present this via Zoom tonight. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. There have been no provisions made to the text of ordinance 1073 since last seen. This has gone to a committee made up of council members. Apologize. I made up of council members Coke, Martin, and the mayor. At the council meeting, we did discuss if any changes to this were needed and determined no. The property that is to be developed as a car wash on your next agenda item, currently zoned as mixed-use center zoning district. The plan as part of our zoning code update process, which we're currently going through, is that subject property is likely not going to remain a mixed-use center zoning. It will transition to one of our commercial districts, C1, C2, C3, along with other areas along Merle Hay Road. So our mixed-use center zoning district would not have car washes in the future. But in this interim period, until between adoption of this ordinance and completion of the zoning code update later this year, there would be a small interim period where they would be allowed in the mixed-use district. Staff are pretty comfortable that we're not going to see additional car wash proposals in the district in that timeframe. I cannot guarantee that it won't happen, but there have been no inquiries. Happy to go into further detail as needed or answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, have any questions for Clayton? If not, do we have a motion to approve third and final reading and to adopt and publish ordinance number 1073?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7C. Consider removing from the table and consider approval of the following items related to PZK's 21-31, Shine Shop Car Wash. Resolution number 22-12, a resolution approving a parking waiver for the Fairway Grocery Store and Scooter's Coffee located at 6005 Merle Hay Road. Resolution 22-13, a resolution approving the site plan for Shine Shop Car Wash at 6035 Merle Hay Road. And resolution 22-14, a resolution accepting a stormwater management facilities maintenance agreement for 6035 Merle Hay Road. Do we have a motion to remove those three resolutions from the table?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. We have the item before us again. Clayton, is that you again?
I'm interviewing a Zoom again. Splash Express LLC has submitted this site plan for the development of a single-tunnel automated car wash at 6035 Merle Hay Road. This is immediately north of Fairway Grocery Store and south of the Dollar Tree along Merle Hay Road. Property is zoned as part of our mixed-use center ROC1 zoning district and is currently a vacant parcel with some stormwater detention facilities in place serving adjoining properties. As part of tonight's action, one item is to address a parking defer waiver for the Fairway Grocery Store. I just want to address that real quick first. As part of the Fairway Site Plan Approval, in the Scooter's Coffee Site Plan Approval, council had previously approved deferral and a waiver of parking requirements for that site with the condition that they retain the ability to install up to 55 parking, 50 or 55 parking spaces on the north adjoining subject property. Since that time, that option has never been exercised, and council has never directed installation of those parking facilities. It seems that the parking lot is rarely fully utilized in its current configuration. So staff in the planning and zoning commission are recommending the waiver of the remaining parking spaces and eliminating that requirement so that it would free up the subject parcel for full development. Property would meet all of our open space landscaping requirements as proposed with open space landscaping as well. There are no buffer requirements, but the applicant has enhanced the buffer or the landscaping along Merle Hay Road, specifically around the stormwater detention basin, to provide a more visually attractive scene for persons or motorists traveling along Merle Hay Road. I am providing a little bit of a buffer between the trail and the stormwater detention basin. There is existing trees on the property that will be removed as part of this site plan. These are generally species of mulberry, Siberian elm, and Chinese elm, which are undesirable and invasive species and are recommended for root removal. Access to the site will be via a private access drive running north-south, connecting to two private drives that each intersect with Merle Hay Road. A traffic study was completed by the city's engineer. No modifications to any of the Merle Hay Road intersections are warranted at this time, but we will need to continue to monitor those intersections over time to determine if any modifications are needed. But as proposed, it would meet all city requirements with traffic access and circulation. all, all city requirements with traffic access and circulation. Pedestrian circulation, by its nature, a car wash tends to not be a pedestrian-oriented business. Someone's generally not walking up to use a car wash. I guess someone might, but I don't know why. But we do trail along Merle Hay Road, and they are providing a public sidewalk easement along their south property line to allow for future sidewalk extension to the remaining vacant parcel to the east of this between Fairway and the Generation Next daycare. So they have accounted for pedestrian circulation within the neighborhood. They would meet all of our off-street parking requirements. Most of the parking on the north side of the building is actually the vehicle cleaning bays with vacuums. And I did include pictures that applicant had provided of the, of some of their existing facilities elsewhere in the metro, which include their vacuums, which can hopefully give some indication of what that space, those spaces might look like. Yeah, Cindy just pulled that up. And this is also a good time to talk about the architecture. Building is required to be 75% permanent materials. Also, since it is along Merle Hay Road, 50% of the site-facing Merle Hay Road has to be brick. This is total wall area minus glass. They are in compliance with all the material requirements with the mixture of brick, split, split plate, CMU, and architectural metal panels, and glass, glass, glass as well. At this time, the site plan meets all city requirements and all engineering requirements and is in final form. Happy to go into further detail or answer any questions as needed. I can't see the audience, but I suspect you have someone from the representative available if there's any questions there.
Council, does anyone have any questions for Clayton?
Mayor, I do. Clayton, there was an example of the monument sign provided, and the monument sign image that's provided shows its location very close to a street or thoroughfare. There's nothing in this documentation that indicates that they're trying to place a monument sign that close on Merle Hay, correct?
No, and on the site plan, they do identify their monument sign location. That is, I believe, their Ankeny location, so they, they would likely have different setback requirements. On their particular site, they will be in the southwest corner. I don't know if it's on this page. I know on the landscaping page it's there, Cindy. Yeah, the evergreen tree, right above your cursor. Yeah, yeah, right. Go to your left, Cindy. Yeah, right there.
How does that align with the Fairway sign that's across?
That would be, that would be the same setback as the Fairway sign.
Okay.
Other questions for Clayton?
Mayor, I have a question for Clayton. Is there any TIFT incentives with this development, this plan, this property improvement?
At this time, there is no TIFT incentives being utilized.
Okay.
And there have been no discussions about utilization to date.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Clayton?
Mayor, I do. Clayton, has there been any discussion? If I understand site plans, and I'm not good at this, I will be the first to admit it. But when I compare the overlay, they will not be using the existing curb cutout and entrance to that property. Is that correct?
No, they will not. And in fact, that's actually already been removed. When we widened from sidewalk to trail in 2021, we as a city did remove that curb cut. And so they would be utilizing the north shared access with the Dollar Tree and Generation Next in the south access, which is the Fairway access point. And those are existing cross-access egress easements that they have the right to use.
Okay. So the, the, the position on the overlay indicating that curb cut is no longer there, and there's been a curb restored there?
Yeah, and you might be, I don't know what G you're specifically looking at.
One of the Zooms, Zoom Out Number One?
Oh, yeah, that's a, that's an older aerial image. And yeah, that's since been removed.
All right, thank you.
Other questions for Clayton? Do we have any questions for the applicant?
I don't have a question so much as I'm just going to state my appreciation for the changes that Roger made to the plan, the addition of the perennials to make it a little more exciting, a little more habitat-friendly for our songbirds and our pollinators. I appreciate the changes you made. Thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd just like to add, I thought I would really appreciate Councilperson Martin and the folks from Sign Shop for taking time to get together. I thought it was a really good discussion and try to find middle ground. And then everybody entered the discussion with the willingness to open mind and try to find a solution. I thought Councilperson Martin's suggestions about plantings that were favorable for songbirds was, I thought a really good suggestion and maybe even helpful down the line as we deal with other issues related to songbirds.
Yeah, maybe we should tell them too that they can't attract cats either. You know, like, they can have the songbirds, but there can't be any in-shop cat.
Good process and a good outcome. If there aren't any other questions or comments, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-12?
I move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-13?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. And do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-14?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you, thank you very much for working with us on this. Item 7D, consider approval of claims in the amount of $1,386,879.11. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. We have a couple of closed session items, and then we also want to pick up the budget discussion. Should we do the close, let's, let's do this city administrator and city council comments first. Go into the closed sessions and then pick up the budget. We have people here for the closed sessions, so.
Just to have a couple of items this evening. First of all, they had the pre-construction conference today for the Tressal to Tressal Bridge. And the good news is, the contractor hired is actually United Contractors here in Johnson. So we're glad that we have a local company that's going to be performing the work on the project. Their late start date is April 25th, so they need to be under construction prior to April 25th. But they indicated that as early as next week, if they can get some of the snow melt out, and they want to try to beat the, the spring thos before the creek would fill back up with water again. So they're going to, they may be as early as next week be starting the construction on the replacement of the bridge. And the construction timeline is about 100 days. And that's, you know, obviously if there's no delays for anything. I did ask this morning at the meeting if they're anticipating any material delays because we know how materials have been difficult for construction projects. At this point in time, they're not aware of any that, that will slow them down, but they're not committing to that because certainly it could happen as they move forward with the project. So very good news on, on that project. I wanted to let the council know also that we did receive a grant from the state of Iowa. I mentioned earlier the ICAP grant, which helps us with the study and synchronizing of our traffic signals to help with traffic movement and those kinds of things. So we are getting some grant money from the state of Iowa for that. The, I wanted to remind the council that next Monday on the 24th of January is a joint planning and zoning and city council meeting. And that's related to the, or excuse me, the zoning code update. So it'll be a joint meeting with P&amp;Z on that evening. And that is all that I have for today.
Councilmember Evans?
Nothing.
Yeah, I just want to thank the staff for cleaning up the snows that we had, the snowstorm earlier this week. Thank you very much for cleaning up. I had a lot of good comments come by from the public saying that was a really fast way to move out the snow. So thank you everyone for doing that. Appreciate that.
Councilman Coe?
So earlier today, I circulated a video from a meeting that I participated in last week from the MAC group. MAC is the Metro Advisory Council. And it's made up of mayors, members, city council members from all over the Des Moines metro area. We had a presentation from Scott Racker, who runs the Ray Center at Drake University, about civility at council meetings, really public meetings, any public meeting. It doesn't have to be limited to council. But I thought the presentation was really, really good. It's about a 20-minute video of him talking and then Q and A. And then also, I will circulate, he had a PowerPoint as well. You can see the PowerPoint as part of the Zoom call. But, you know, I think, you know, Johnston, we've always done a great job of having a very civil dialogue amongst the members of the council, I feel. But certainly, I think we all sort of feel and feel partisanship sort of squeezing in on us, whether it be from Washington DC or the state Capitol or whatever. I think we've all worked really hard to try to hold that off. And I thought Scott made some really good points about things that are good habits to kind of develop and build on as part of that. So I'd encourage you to get a chance to watch the, the video. And if you have any questions or anything, let me know.
Councilman Burkhart?
No, nothing to add.
Yes, Mayor, I do have a question. We have a, our February, our first city council meeting in February is on the 7th, and it's the same night as the caucuses for the state of Iowa. And in the past, we have moved that meeting to the next Tuesday. Is this something we will consider again?
Any public hearings?
My head? That'll be the February 7th meeting?
Yeah, I thought we had, did we set a public hearing tonight?
Check. We typically have done that by, I believe we've done it by resolution, too. So we won't have another meeting to vote on that prior.
What's that, Cindy?
I believe we've done that by resolution in the past.
Well, but like the, the second meeting in February, so on Tuesday.
Yeah, correct. That's correct. But we won't have another meeting between now and the 7th.
Right. But, but what action do we take to set the meeting? I'm confused by the idea that we have a resolution to move it from a Monday to a Tuesday.
Not a holiday, so.
Oh, okay. So that's the kicker.
It's just established already that if it's a holiday, it falls to the next day.
Okay.
On the call, maybe he can find some feedback.
Councilman Martin, what time do the caucuses start?
Well, I think that they start at 7:00 PM. And this would be for both parties.
Yeah. Is it possible to change the time of the meeting without a resolution?
I'm waiting for Tim to weigh in on that.
Yes, this is Tim Pearson. I, normally we publish this for a certain time. I think you would technically, you would have to have a resolution to change the time.
Could we consider, could we consider a resolution tonight, Tim?
I haven't noticed it.
I'm sorry?
We do have a meeting next Monday night with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Can we just do a resolution that evening?
I think, I would think that you'd be able to do it then.
Okay, we'll have one action item on that agenda then.
So then the only other question is, have we set any public hearings for next week?
I just looked, and Patrick, I think you said the 20th is what, we set a date for a public hearing tonight, but I think it's on the 20th.
That's what I saw.
Okay, so we should be good.
Unless we said, I don't know if we say anything in the last meeting that would be on the 7th.
We'll look prior to the meeting on Monday and make sure we're, we're good to go.
Thank you for that. My only other thing is, I would like to request a set of the plans for the Merle Hay and Johnston Drive project that was on the consent agenda tonight. I'd like to get a electronic link to that. I know Matt's not here, but if someone could send that to me, that'd be great. Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
I'll, I'll pass this evening as well. Why don't we move to the closed sessions? We have two closed sessions this evening. The first one is a closed session under Iowa Code Section 21.51(c) to discuss strategy with council on matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed.
The greenhouse gas emission study, is this an appropriate time to discuss that? So something that I don't know that you guys know, at the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, they voted to join, according to Ginger Solberg, they voted to join ICLI, which is a, I think it's an international organization that provides technical consulting to local governments so that they can meet their sustainability objectives. And by joining ICLI, their staff can, let me, I will get the email that I was reading. Of course, it's got, the, the MPO staff, Van Pelt, I can't remember her first name. Anyway, she can start on the greenhouse emission studies for all the metropolitan communities that would like to have it done, I guess, something to this effect. Now, this is, this is third-hand information I'm getting. So originally, the ask was staff time to provide the documentation stats needed to create a greenhouse emission study. The purpose of a greenhouse emission study is if we start to implement more sustainable activities, we have a benchmark to see how we've progressed and how well we're doing in terms of lowering our carbon footprint. Does this all make sense? So anyway, there was going to be this ask of like 40 to, I can't remember how many staff hours to provide the, to coordinate, to provide the data sets that the University of Northern Iowa students needed to pull together the greenhouse emission study. Sounds like now there's a staff person who has access to all that for the metropolitan communities that are involved in MPO. And so I still, I still think there will be some staff time, but it's not going to be 40 hours.
So is there a proposal from, I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit lost in what you were just
I, I get that because it's hearsay from Ginger.
Okay.
But I, and we'll clarify that. But we always knew there wasn't an actual dollar amount to do this greenhouse emission study. It was a, an ask of staff time. Now, the only thing that I know for sure is, we believe it's less staff time now.
Why don't you follow up on it?
Well, I can follow up for it. In addition to this.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead. If you've got more information on this.
Virginia Solberg told me the same thing at the Trail Committee the other night. So, and I don't know, have the details. I did want to just I did want to just let the council know that I did reach out a week ago, and I tried to contact Mr. Enshayan, who is taking Eric Giddon's place at the UNI group, to see if they're still doing that program and if students are still providing that. I have not heard back from him. So I was, I just want to let you know that I did follow up to see if they're still providing that service to communities. Do you happen to know, or whether they still are?
I heard they were, but I, I don't, I can't tell you who, who told me that. I can't give you any facts or figures.
I got on, I got online. This is the director of the program now that took over Mr. Giddon's spot. So as soon as I hear back from them, I'll let you know. But yes, we do need to hear, understand what Virginia was sharing with us as well.
So the follow-up to this is, it could be that we need, it could be that we're still going to need some staff time, and staff is busy. But I would like to say that this is important direction that I'd like to see our city continue to make inroads on. We went ahead and put, you know, the, we're doing the solar panels on the building, the office building part, and, you know, it's important, when I've canvassed with, as running for election, for reelection, people talk to me about stuff like this. So I think it is important to our community to be, to make progress in reducing our carbon footprint. I'm not, I'm not being very succinct. I apologize for that. The next step after the greenhouse emissions would be, emissions study would be to create a climate change plan. I've had conversations with Councilman Cope, and he recommended that we would talk to other communities to see if they were interested in, in the same sort of thing, because communities like Urbendale and Grimes are sort of similar to us in terms of population and, and industry, the industries we have within our groups. And I had a very brief conversation with city council members from Urbendale, and they are 100% on board with proceeding with their own climate change plans. They'd be happy to coordinate with us if we, if we had some projects that crossed over boundaries, and I don't know what those would be. I would just say that they're excited about reduce, doing things in their community to reduce their sustainable, their carbon footprint. They're on board. I don't know what those things are. As far as Grimes goes, I've talked to, to, one city council member there, and I haven't gotten ahold of the other one that I know very well. And I would say that they might be in the middle. The point of bringing this up at the budget meeting right now is to say, I have, I have no ask for in this budget, except for the fact that I'd like to continue to say, I'd like us to continue to work on it. Think about ways that we could support, subsidize, encourage people to do more sustainable projects. Up at Iowa State, we have a sustainability director that is shared between Iowa State and the City of Ames. Her appointment is shared, and the City of Ames, the city council votes on her contract every year. She has to come in with a list of what she accomplished that year and what, and then she gets direction from the city council directly about what they'd like her to concentrate on the coming year. And so every year, they vote on her contract. And that was the other thing that I talked to the city council in Urbendale is, perhaps we could think about sharing a sustainability director, because, again, our cities are similar, and if we had, one of the problems with staff time on these sustainability directions is they've got, they've already got a lot on their plate. And developing programs or encouraging programs or meeting with neighborhoods to talk about the sustainability programs that we have takes a lot of time. And I, I don't think that John and his staff have time for stuff like that. They're already busy. We should maybe consider a, sharing a sustainability director. All of these things I'm just bringing up now, saying I'd like to have these conversations this, this coming year, and then the next time we meet, a year from now, perhaps we have a direction, and perhaps we could be able to fund some of those efforts. So I appreciate you listening to me, and that's all I want to say about that. Thank you.
I think that's a good, good approach, Councilman Martin. I think there's a lot more information that needs to be gathered. And I'd, I'd personally like to see the report from this, the coordinator in Ames, see what kind of recommendations that she's made and the accomplishments that they've achieved.
And she, she sent it to me, and of course, I went on vacation, and then I kind of forgot to put all that together. But I will get that. But it's, yeah, I mean, since she had to report every year, she's been doing this for 12 years or something. She has a whole line of programs that she's worked on. So that would be.
That'd be interesting to see.
Yep.
Mayor, I'd like to add some feedback if possible. First and foremost, I appreciate my fellow council members' comments. I fully support and encourage the conversations this next year on sustainability and moving forward with that greenhouse gas study. I think, I think we need details, because I think there's still a lot of numbers that no one knows that have tried to be tossed out as far as how much it would cost to develop a plan, et cetera. When the Des Moines Partnership came and gave their presentation in the work session, their ask was an increase of 50, from 5950 to that 10,000. And I posed the question, could it be funded out of TIF? Do we have an answer on that?
Can I just ask you?
Have it in any of our urban renewal plans as something that we could fund with TIF? I mean, we have to have it in the urban renewal plan as an expense, listed as an expense. I'd have to.
I pose that from the standpoint of, they stood here and talked explicitly about economic development, and that's really that ramp up. And so that's the only thing that triggers there. And I'll be blunt, it's about trying to be creative in how we can fund some of these things that even if it's $2,500 more or less increased, they could go to something else. Which, one of the things I do want to make mention of is, of the groups that were receiving, and kind of third-party groups that, that made asks and are receiving increases, this is the only one. The Johnston Partnership, however, asked for an increase above their 15,000, and the staff recommendation is to keep it the same. I'm highly sensitive of the needs of this city, and, and how the Johnston Partnership that is, is able to meet some of those needs. And in some cases, the citizens of Johnston have to go to other places and pantries to be able to also gain some sort of benefit. I'm also keenly aware that the child tax credit is now gone, and therefore, some of the numbers that may have been slightly lower in the last half of this year, in that the Johnston Partnership served, may ramp back up. And this is one way that we could continue to do so. So I would actually advocate with funding to the Johnston Partnership at a higher level, nearer to where their ask is, as opposed to staying steady at the 15,000, if we're going to start talking about increasing other organizations that try to promote loosely economic development. So, I'll stop there.
Councilman Burkhart, I think the recommendation from the Finance Committee was to increase, bump up the Johnston Partnership, or the Des Moines Partnership just slightly, because we have not provided an increase to them for a number of years. And when you look at the comparison of what the, the City of Johnston contributes to them with other, other communities in the metro, we're, we're right at the bottom.
Sure. I understand all of that justification, and I support that. I'm not.
And so, we made, we made an exception in that case because we had, have, have just not given them an increase, increase for several years. And we have other organizations, including the Johnston Partnership.
Sure. And I would recommend that we continue to give a slight bump up again this next year. The, the costs of food, the costs of everything have gone up, and those burdens upon the families in Johnston are certainly impacted by that very directly. So that's where I stand.
Can I just ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Are you, are you, are you suggesting that the Des Moines Partnership be bumped up higher than the 7,500 and use TIF to take that?
If we could, if we could utilize TIF, I would certainly meet their ask of 10,000. That's correct.
Okay. And then you're also proposing some unnumbered increase in the Johnston Partnership?
That's right.
Okay.
If that can be supported by TIF, which I'll have to double-check with the urban renewal plan itself, but if that can be supported by TIF, is there consensus from the full council to go to the full 10,000?
I think part of it is, I mean, one is, can you legally do it? I think that's what you're asking. Two, I, I think the question is always financially. Remember that we're also taking $100,000, potentially $100,000 out of TIF to fund the second economic development. That is a, for me, a much greater priority than funding the Johnston, the Des Moines Partnership. I, I sort of feel like we're taking them from 5,900 to 7,500. I feel really good about that. So I, I just always get a little nervous. TIF is sort of this, I mean, it's not, finding how much money we have in all the different TIF accounts is always, I mean, the budget book does help, but, so I, I also, I don't like this idea of you fund one, you fund a thing partly out of one fund and partly out of another. I just think that gets really convoluted. So I, to me, I would be, I'm fine with supporting the Johnston, the Des Moines Partnership up at the 7,500. I'm nervous about the, the second TIF part, just because, without seeing that we have a significant amount of money for that, I just don't feel, I, I'm very comfortable funding it at 7,500. I don't believe we need to go to 10,000 for the Des Moines Partnership.
Two questions. One, are you alluding that if we paid it out of TIF, we'd have to borrow from the different districts? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know.
And you made that comment of pulling money from one area and then funding it from another. I don't know where that came from.
Well, you have to, you have to pull it from some, well, obviously, we're, we're going to pull 100,000 out to fund this economic development person. So I don't know where that'll leave us in the different TIF accounts.
Okay.
And I don't want to jeopardize being able to do that by having this other, granted, it's a much, much smaller amount.
Sure.
But it's just, from my standpoint, it's, the messiness of trying to fund this out of two different funds, it's just, I, I, I think it's, it's, it's too created by half.
I guess I'm not, I'm not proposing to pull it out of multiple funds, though.
You're proposing to pull, yes. Hotel motel?
No.
That's, okay.
It would, it would be explicitly paid out of TIF.
Okay.
Part of, historically, again, just telling you historically, we have only expended TIF dollars out of a TIF district in which something was generated in. As, as an example, Adam tracks his hours. So he's paid mostly out of TIF 1, because obviously, the town center's been in TIF 1 this time. So, I mean, the majority of the last year, he was in TIF 1. But it would be really hard for me to be able to tell you which district the Greater Des Moines Partnership was working in, for me to calculate which district got a TIF benefit because they were our economic development partner. Yeah.
It would be an approach that we haven't taken before, and could, I mean, would it, would there be questions about it from an auditing perspective?
And I think part of it, we probably need to talk with our attorney that handles our TIF, with Nathan Overburg, to see if that's an appropriate use for the funding.
My gut check is telling me it's not, but I'm not the lawyer, so.
Your gut check is?
My gut check's telling me it's not.
I think we need to talk to Nathan, just to assure, make sure that that's.
But.
I mean, I would rather, I would rather leave it at its current level than risk the, you know, the, risk the potential of, you know, not, not legally spending the money the way we should.
I can, I'll check with Nathan, though, just to make sure. And, and be able to email you all a response.
I also think the audit question, too, also, all of a sudden now, the auditor is going to have to, I mean, either the auditor's going to spend, we're getting, the staff will spend time trying to figure out how to allocate it, and then you got to justify it. I, I just, I don't, I, I, I think it's, it's too clever by half, and, and that's why I don't.
Good question, but I.
Well, this also leads me, though, to a greater, I, I understand that, and I can, I can certainly surrender that, that ask. I mean, we're not talking about a significant amount of money, and I think actually, we have, if the council felt strongly enough to try to go the, fund the full 10,000, we could do so out of the hotel, and we have reserves to be able to do that. Where would 7,500 put us in rankings of those other cities?
At the bottom.
Would 10,000 put us above them?
I couldn't care less.
Well, you say you care less, but at the same point, that's the justification for trying to give some sort of up toward it, whereas, we have one Johnston Partnership. So therefore, we're at the bottom right now of funding those who need our support services most, because we're the only one. And now, you could argue, we're at the top of that, too. Where I'm, where I'm spinning this is from the standpoint of, you don't care where we are in the list of communities that fund the Des Moines Partnership, and yet, you're using that as your argument to try to raise.
I'm not using, I, I, I'm not using, to me, there's, they're two completely separate, the Johnston Partnership and the Des Moines Partnership are two completely, whether you fund, what you do with them, two completely separate. I, when we were in the Finance Committee and there was a suggestion to raise the Des Moines Partnership, I doubt that I said a word.
Okay.
It was not something I felt strongly about, and when they said 7,500 instead of going to 10,000, I was like, fine, whatever. I, you know, to me, it's, that's, I, it just wasn't my fight, you know? But I, you know, so I.
Our increase to 7,500 gets us equal with Indianola and Norwalk, and then it jumps up to 15,000 that Altoona, Clive, Waukegan give, and then Ankeny, Urbendale, West Des Moines, I'll give 30,000.
And it's an increase from what, to 7,500?
$5,590.
So $2,000. You know, we spent more than $2,000 worth of time tonight talking about it.
Yeah, I'm perfectly, to me, I think the 7,500 is fine. I think that what I struggle with is trying to use TIF money.
Sure, okay.
Because TIF is, is like, it's like this patch, it's not like one fund for the whole town. It's like these six, and that's, that's where I'm just like.
And so I'll, I'll take that, I mean, if, if you want, if you want to, for fun, like you have nothing else to do, find out if that is even an eligible expense at some point, great to know. I, I'm pulling that back even, that, that we don't even need to, to address it in that capacity. Theresa, you bring up another point, though, that concerns me a little bit more, and that is, one of the areas of Johnston that desperately needs some of that economic development is that 86th Street corridor, which doesn't have a lot of TIF left in it to be able to give. And if you're saying it really can only be built, you know, in the work of an economic development coordinator or assistant, can only be done in areas where there's TIF money to give.
Or to, or the capacity to earn.
And that's the other aspect. I mean, we, you know, I'm, I'm a little concerned because of, of our desperate need to be able to do something there. So.
I think we need to have a conversation about what, how we handle 86th Street. I, I think there's a way to, but.
There, there are council members on this side that want to make a comment.
Years back, and Tom, help me here. Hello? So a few years back, there was a discussion about, do we give the money to the Johnston Partnership or the Des Moines Partnership? And there was discussion about statistically, there are more people coming from Des Moines to use our services because of the hours that we were open than there were people from Johnston going to Des Moines. And, and I guess, I'm, at that time, we decided to fund the Johnston Partnership with a greater percentage, because our, you know, Des Moines was taking advantage of what we were giving Johnston Partnership.
But the, but the Des Moines Partnership is economic development, though. It's, that is, even though.
Wasn't there, didn't we have this debate before? We, we, we decided to give more toward Johnston because it helped our people more, our residents more? Or what am I missing?
I don't, I don't remember that. I mean, one is economic development, and the other one is human services that are under, you know, that people are falling through the gaps.
And maybe that was the.
Yeah, I think what you're recalling, Councilman Evans, is some information that we've received in the past that shows that we do have a large number of, of metro residents outside of Johnston that do come to the Johnston Partnership for. that do come to the Johnston Partnership for a variety of different reasons. Because of the services that they provide, the product that they can receive, the clothing that they might be able to get, the hours that they operate. It's a very popular, popular location for people who access those services. So we do have a large number of people outside of Johnston that do, do, do take advantage of, of, in a, in a positive way of the Johnston Partnership.
But the, but a lot of the food that is given out at the Johnston Partnership is coming from Des Moines. I mean, they, they are looking, you know, there's a...
It's, it's part of a regional, it's, it's part of Des Moines.
It's a regional food bank, so...
Right, right.
It's not just like Johnston people are giving to Johnston Partnership and then other communities are coming in and taking our resources. No, it's a shared group across all the communities.
Yeah, I, I haven't looked at, I, I haven't gone back and looked at the Johnston Partnership materials that they shared with us, and maybe, maybe we should now, if, if there's suggestions on the table to, to raise them up, which I think is certainly, you know, worth considering. So, to go back and look, I can't remember, you know, I don't know if they act, what data they have that shows how, how many people they actually track are Johnston residents.
That information's been provided to us in the past.
Okay, great, I'd love to, I'd love to see it, yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I haven't...
I mean, nobody, I mean, everyone knows that, that I'm very supportive of the Johnston Partnership and just recently raised over $11,000 for them, again. And, you know, I, I, you know, I think, I think they should, they should sustain themselves on private fundraising and shouldn't look to, you know, Johnston city government to, to make sure that, that their, their budget is being balanced. They're, you know, they, they are nonprofit and they should, should rely pretty heavily on private fundraising. And that's why I...
And I did make the suggestion, so I don't...
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's why I step up to the plate every year and I do what I can to help support them.
We all stepped up to the, I mean, we...
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and so...
Mayor, I disagree. I, I mean, I, I feel like this is a role of government to take care of all of, of our citizens and this is one way we can do so. We don't have a human services department, otherwise, this is one of the mechanisms that we can do it. So, we can respectfully disagree on that.
But I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And I, and, and I, I'm with you, Brian. I'm still confused on, one is the human services. Johnston Partnership is more of a human services thing and, and for the first time, the Des Moines Partnership is not?
Economic development.
Yeah, they're basically the Des Moines Chamber. The Des Moines Partnership is the Des Moines Chamber of Commerce. For the, and they're kind of, so if you join the Johnston Chamber, then you also are a member of the Des Moines, but they call it the Des Moines Partnership.
Right.
And so, but it's, yeah, it's an, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's basically the chamber organization, umbrella chamber organization and the economic development. They do all, you know, so they, they do, like the guy, this Brian Crowe, who came to our council meeting, they do, you know, they'll work with, you know, on, you know, larger economic development projects that come into the Des Moines region.
My only reason for combining both in the same conversation was clearing why the Des Moines Partnership, an economic development organization, got an increase and why a local human services organization that also asked for an increase did not. That's, that, that was the only reason why both were brought into the same conversation. Clearly knowing the roles, their services that they provide, not only to Johnston residents, but also to the metropolitan community differed, so...
Yeah, and I, and I, and a, a last sort of fact point. We, we had this, this same disagreement you and the mayor are having. I want to make sure it's between you and the mayor. Because three, three years ago, it was between Rhonda, the mayor, and the mayor, and myself, and somebody else. And we gave an increase, it was like from 11,900 to 15,000 for the Johnston Partnership. And we did, have, did not, the Des Moines Partnership has been getting the same amount for many, many years past. So, more recently, we have given an increase to the Johnston Partnership than we have to the Des Moines Partnership. That being said, that doesn't mean right, wrong, or different. Just, just for a background.
Thank you.
And I, I think I would add to that is that recently, we, recently, within last few years, we gave the Johnston Chamber more money. We were giving them 6,000 for many years, we're just giving them 8,000 now. JEDCO, we increased them not too long ago. So, it was sort of like the last one that we had to increase was the Des Moines Partnership. It's sort of, you know, and so that, that played into it as well as we took a look at where we've sort of been static with all these organizations we support.
And recently, we've experienced a pandemic. And recently, we've had food prices go up exorbitantly. And recently, transportation and other things are limited. So, in essence, as I try to look, to try to lift all boats.
And I, and I would say that if you look at other city governments, they do provide support to human services organizations in their city. Urbendale provides funding to Ucan. West Des Moines provides a significant amount of money for their, they actually have a human services agency. I mean, so, this, this viewpoint, and it's not, that, that, that those organizations should receive public support is not necessarily adopted by other cities. So, that's another sort of fact point that might be helpful as part of this discussion.
Which, which we do as well.
Yeah, but, but, but to 15,000, right. Right? The 15,000 we provide to Johnston Partnership.
What do we provide to the Johnson Partnership?
15,000.
I, I'm not...
Say anything more?
No, no, and I, no, I stated, I stated that I'd love to see it up. No one else wants to, no one else wants to kind of go with any kind of dollar figure to up then? I mean, I, I just appreciate you listening.
I would suggest, I mean, the, I was asked to put together an email summarizing my ask. I think anybody else, I, I'm not sure exactly what, Councilperson Martin has sort of an ask on the greenhouse gas thing, sort of.
That's a very good point, you know? I should write it up and...
Have an ask and you got till Friday to get it out and we can talk about it at the next meeting.
Yep, I, I will agree to, I will outline what I'm talking about for our next budget year and...
Well, I was, I was more thinking about specifically for this...
Well, I, mine is a little more future oriented. You guys is our, for this, for this budget, yeah.
But I still think it's... I understood Councilmember Martin's proposal was to gather information for us and provide that to us.
But still, it's all, it's always good to put these things down in a memo form.
And it's, so if you're not, if you're not, if you're not seeking, yeah, but anyway, that's what I would suggest to you.
If at all possible, if you, if you, Councilman Burkhart, if you do have a recommendation on what you wanted to have, I guess I would like to prefer to know that so that I can start figuring things out as quickly as possible. Or if you're, if you're just gonna, if you're going to at least agree to the tax rate that we proposed and that if there's something else you're going to be funding and you agree to use reserve, that's a different story for me as well, so...
Well, and I guess to that point, everything that I've discussed or that Councilperson Burkhart has discussed don't impact the levy rate.
Absolutely.
So I would be prepared tonight...
The Johnston Partnership does.
Isn't it out of the Hotel Motel?
It's general fund.
Okay, that's general fund, okay, all right.
But, but it's, their ask is like $10,000 more than we put in the budget, I believe, that they asked for 25%?
Yes.
I have it right in front of me.
It was 10,000 more from 15 to 25,000.
So $10,000 more, even if we took that out of the general fund reserve, it would not change that 25%. It would still say 25% is what I'm trying to say.
You've got enough, a little bit of a leeway there, that we can still have a reserve that is 25% even if we did find the 10,000 to add to the Johnston Partnership.
Right. Leaving my, leaving that levy rate where I have it at 10, 68.
Which is a 5%.
5 cents.
5 cent increase.
Okay.
I, I would support that. I would support finding that additional $10,000 for the Johnston Partnership. I've stayed mute on this subject, but we have come through a pandemic. There are people suffering. I do feel that there, there is a role for the city to support the Johnston Partnership and all the good works they do. Because it's not just, it's just, it's not just the food bank. It's the Backpacks Home for Kids. I mean, they have, they have a lot of things that they are doing that support our kids. Mentoring at the school, I can't even remember all the stuff they do. So I would throw my hat in the ring to support that.
At this point, I, I totally agree with you, Brian. I totally agree that Johnston Partnership probably needs more than, but I'm more of a data person. So, I understand what you say, but I, I mean, you also said that maybe more people will come by to get stuff they don't have because of pandemic and people losing their jobs and things like that. That's probably true, but I'd like to see that, a little bit more of a data on that.
Before I actually say that this is a good thing to do.
And I mean, 10,000 is something that we need to be very conscious of how we spend that money. So I would, I would prefer that. If you could, whatever that mail, email you're trying to get together, if you could get some data with, to back up what you're saying and that could be a good way to support it or not support, I'll wait until then. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to see the data and the data that they pulled, that's available on who, who uses it. I, I was sort of more thinking 5,000, but then Theresa doubled it.
She said we had it, so I was like, I was like, okay!
I, I, so anyway, I, I'd like, I'd like to see the memo and then, and I, but I also would support giving staff direction to move forward with the levy at 10, 68. I think we're in a position to do that.
Yeah, regardless of how this conversation comes out.
Agreed.
Right, agreed. Is everybody okay with that? So, Councilman Burkhart, you're going to prepare a memo?
Yes.
Staff is going to provide to us the information similar to what they have in the past in terms of people who access the Johnston Partnership, the customers.
That was going to be my main comment and, and I, just to sort of wrap this up, I'm not hearing any significant conversation about what's proposed for the budget, what our, what our reserve is, what our tax rate is. I think everybody's okay with that. There's been a lot of good conversation this evening about some other items that, that I think Theresa and I need to talk about and think about how we incorporate those and still accomplish what we're trying to do within the budget. And this conversation needs to happen and I'm glad it's happening tonight. But I think if we can go back and, and we'll certainly bring that back to the council. It won't be a, you know, an hour and a half, or I guess we're close to two and a half hours now. But it'll be a, we'll put it on the next work session, just what we've talked about and, and we'll certainly, Councilmember Burkhart's going to give us, you know, his proposal or, you know, information about that and, and so we'll, we'll incorporate that as well, so...
Just so I clarify, I, I am more than happy, I, I experienced a wonderful data walk, so to speak, from D-Mark and the Johnston Partnership this last year. And that's the data that I will be going back to, actually, I'll get fresher data than that and, and hopefully be able to share that with you. My clarification is, city will try to get peer area information about airport support? Yes, no?
No.
Who's going to do that?
I'm doing the airport memo.
And, and you're going to get everything that...
Yeah, we've got all that, that's all pulled together.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand where we are in that argument.
Yep, yep.
Theresa, you have some airport information, correct? Okay, you've collected that, so...
Okay, that's I know who was providing that.
And what Cindy has gathered for us in the past is information about who accesses the services at the Johnston Partnership.
Yeah, and I, Councilmember Burkhart, did I misunderstand? You have that data?
I, I do and I have a contact and I'll pull the freshest, if that's all right, so...
Fine.
If you're, if you're all right with me doing it, I'd be happy to put that on my plate, so thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else that we need to discuss this evening? Are we okay, Teresa? There's nothing else, then we are adjourned. Whoops.
I'm just going to say, we didn't get to the historic preservation and the Mid-Iowa planning. We will get to that. We'll add that to the list when we meet next time about this.
Yeah, I would say on the historic preservation, I would like to find some sort of middle way that reduces staff burden as much as possible. But if we, that's the only thing that concerns me is, is finding something that'll make the folks in the community that are, that are interested in this satisfied. But at the same time, I'm very concerned about any additional staff responsibility. I think we have to draw the line on that, so...
Okay. Anything else? We'll adjourn for a second time.
And 750 for the art walk.